In the second row is Ross Long, he's our new fifth grade teacher.
Oh, yeah.
You met Ross before?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Let's have some fun. Okay, I'll start this then. Holy cow. You mirror me, you mirror me, I get this bad, buddy. You mirror me, that guy. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 9th, 2018, School Board meeting together. First of all, roll call, just to note that Dr. Rodriguez is here, Mrs. Lawy is here, Mr. Brookins is here, and Mr. Ellis is here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we'll do tonight is elect officers for the 2018 school year. Are there nominations for President of the School Board?
I would make a motion to nominate Rufus Rodriguez for President.
Second.
And move also that the nomination cease and he be elected on a unanimous ballot.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Dr. Rodriguez be nominated for School Board President for 2018, and the motion was moved that the nomination cease and be elected President on a unanimous ballot. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Mr. President, congratulations to you.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll continue with the rest of the positions. Can I get a nomination for the position of Vice President?
I'll nominate Nicole for Vice President.
I'll second that.
Move that those nominations cease.
Okay, and we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And can I get a motion for position of Clerk?
I would nominate Dell Ellis as the, for Clerk, and move that nomination cease and he be elected on unanimous ballot.
Second.
We have motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, for the position of Treasurer, can I get a nomination?
I would nominate Julie Lawy for Treasurer. I'll second that. And I'll move that nomination cease and Julie be elected Treasurer.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations, everybody. Next is minutes. Have, we had a chance to review the minutes from last time?
I move we accept the minutes as printed from our December 12, 2017 Board meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a new agenda, the green agenda before, in front of you with a few changes. There's an addition of...
The application.
Application for, to be designated a Innovation Research Zone in the pilot program through the Minnesota Department of Education, and that will be added to the agenda. And then we have an Employment Retirement addition under Employment C. And so with those changes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Aye, so move.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so, no celebrations. Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. First of all, I think in your packet you have a distribution of the enrollment. Enrollment has been almost exactly the same as it was last time we met, last year in December. And one thing that I noticed that Mary Cole gave us, she's also, in addition to giving us numbers for K through six and seven through 12, she's also telling us the number of individuals that are out for preschool. Did you distribute those?
Yes.
The enrollment sheets? Okay. Anyway, in the enrollment sheets that you have, I think there were ninety-some listed in preschool, but actually there's 120. So if you want to make that note, we have 120 students enrolled in preschool. We do have 865 students enrolled in elementary. We actually gained two students from our last meeting in December. And at the high school level, we have three students, we're down three students, so we have a net loss of just one. But 1,689 students that we are currently serving, and when you compare that to last year, we're up by about eight or nine or so. And so we're doing really well and keeping our enrollment steady. We had a senior that has transferred to Glean, Illinois. We had a senior that went to a special education program, but otherwise our enrollment's pretty steady. I also wanted to update the board on the Welding Academy, a Saturday Welding Academy. The, we have an announcement that we are going to be conducting another Saturday Welding Academy that's going to start on Saturday, January 20th, and then will go through May 12th. And I just talked to Mr. Modine a little bit ago before our meeting, and we already have 10 students from the Blueworth area high school that have enrolled in this class. Last year, we actually had eight students take the class in the, on Saturday, and eight Blueworth students take the class in the summer. But now we have 10 students from Blueworth that will be taking that class, and three of the 10 students are taking the class for a second time. So they're going to be getting a double dose of welding. They're going to get a total of 120 hours. And, but there'll be more information coming out in the local newspaper this next week to encourage people. And if anybody's listening to this Board meeting tonight, especially if you're an adult who wants to take this class, it costs us $250. And if that's an economic hardship at one time, we are willing to have adults take that class and even pay us monthly maybe $50 a month. And if there's a real hardship, they need to come and talk to me, and we'll try to make it work. But we do have now 21 functional welding booths in the Welding Academy, and we just have great support by our community for that. And then finally, we have a, I have a note here. I contacted the Social Studies Department today at the high school, and, let me distribute this. By the way, on my Facebook page today, there was a two-year anniversary. If you can recall, two years ago, we took a group of 12 students down to see our current President. President Trump was campaigning for President at that time, and we took kids down to see him in Clear Lake, Iowa. And on my Facebook page today, I came up with a picture of Donald Trump that I had taken that night. It was two years ago tonight that our kids got to see him. And with that said, a week from Saturday on the 20th, there's, the six individuals running for the DFL endorsement for Governor of Minnesota will be in Albert Lee. And so we do have a group of students from the high school, juniors and seniors, that have expressed some interest in going to this event. And if they do, then we'll drive them over. If, we'll get a list of kids that want to come in the next week or so, and if we need to take two vans, we'll certainly do that. And as I mentioned in this printout, we'll do the same thing when the Republicans have their forum someplace in the region, whether it's in Mankato or Worthington, and we'll make sure that kids get a chance to go see that. But just a reminder to everybody that on November 6th of 2018, Minnesota will elect a new Governor for the next four years, and I think it's important for our juniors and seniors to be able to go and meet these candidates. One nice thing about this forum over in Albert Lee, it's at the school, and it's at Southwest Middle School, and it's a two-hour forum, and then for an hour after that, individuals that go to the forum can do a meet and greet with the individual candidate. So it's a great way for students to actually get to meet potentially the next, at least the next gubernatorial nominee for one of the two parties, and maybe possibly the next Governor of Minnesota. So with that, that's all the fun I'm having.
Could I just back up for one second? And so, January 20th is the beginning of the welding.
Yes.
We have a cap of 20.
Yes.
And already have 10.
Yes.
So if you're out there and you want this, probably time to get in touch with someone.
You better contact Mr. Modine, either by email or by, by calling him because...
Time sensitive.
It is.
Okay.
Well, there's a lot of interest in this whole region for welders. I mean, in fact, Bob was telling me today that there are five companies within like a 15-mile radius that are currently, right now, advertising for welders. And I see one of our former graduates out in the audience tonight, Sam Beeselman, and he works at Adco, and I know Adco has hired some of our welders, too. And, you know, Sam is one of the technology programmers over there, and also is head of our robotics program here in town.
Very good. Next, we have Financial Business, Donations, Dan.
We have three resolutions for acceptance of gifts. First, in Appendix A, I introduce the following resolution, move for its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Athletic Boosters made the following donations during the 2017 year totaling $25,133.80. Those donations include a computer program, video camera, golf jackets, incentive shirts for cross-country girls' basketball and football, a new gymnastic floor, volleyball equipment, weight room equipment, softball, baseball supplies, cheer supplies, tennis ball machine, tennis wall, girls' soccer balls, speech scripts, the new discus shed behind the football grandstand, girls' hockey practice jerseys, cross-country stopwatches, and various awards. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and Appendix B, I introduce the following resolution, move for its adoption. Whereas the Fairmont Police Officers Association donated $300 for a second-grade field trip to Como Zoo. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second that.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call vote. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Dell? I mean, Dan?
Aye.
And one more?
Yes. In Appendix C, I introduce the following resolution, move for its adoption. Whereas Fairmont firefighters have donated $500 for the second-grade field trip to Como Zoo, and $500 for a sixth-grade field trip to Fort Snelling and the Science Museum. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
I'll second it.
And another roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, I'd just like to thank firefighters and the Police Officers Association, and all the efforts of the Athletic Boosters for these great contributions. And Financial Reports, Julie?
Yes, I will go over those for you. We have, in your packet, you should have received, the December 2017 Treasurers Report. There's a single check that was done for participant fees for select account, and that was done, we tried to avoid doing single checks as much as possible, but that's done if we needed to make a deadline or to avoid some charges and that. And then we also had the December 26, oh, wire transfers, I forgot about the transfers and wires for December 8th to January 4th. Nothing really special there to bring to your attention on that. And then we also have the December 26, 2017, and January 9th, 2018 bills. Nothing really much to bring to your attention. The only two that I really wanted to bring to your attention was the check number 60669, Apple Incorporated. That was for some iPads and some IMAX, and that's for replacements of current things that, staff that we have. And then also, oh, and another one, Fairmont True Value. We had met before Christmas, we had met probably even before Thanksgiving, and that with a select group from the sixth grade, there's, and that one of their requests was to have shelves put in the bathrooms to put their bags on, their items on, so that when they were in the bathroom, they didn't have to lay on the floor. And so that's what this check 60679 is for, the supplies that were used, and those were to be installed over the Christmas break. And then the last one is SHI International, and that was for Chromebooks and, that we would be using for new computers to put into the use in our classes and that. And that is check number 6067, 87, I don't know if I said that or not. But anyway, that's all I have then to bring to your attention.
And Julie, just to update everybody, those iPads have, and the new Macintosh computers for the elementary faculty have arrived. They're in the process of being processed by the tech team. And then those Chromebooks that you mentioned are for S212, which is that large classroom right next to Mr. Hurness's room, and that's a room that's being used as part of the Flex Scheduling Program going on. And so those are actually, those have arrived and are in use. So, yeah, the tech folks are doing a great job.
And that was our plan, was to get them ordered and get them, so that they could be used sooner than later, so, okay? So if there are no questions on those reports or bills, I then would make a motion to approve the Treasurers Report, the single check, wire transfers from December 8th, 2017 to January 4th, 2018, payment of the December 26, 2017, and January 9th, 2018 bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Nothing for old business, new business. Board members were asked about the committee preferences for this coming year. Based upon those preferences, the recommended assignments are as follows. Staff welfare, myself, Julie and Dell, operations, Nicole, Dan and Danielle. Curriculum and policy, Rufus, Nicole and Dell. Athletic Council, Dan. Legislative Representative, Dan. Continuing education, Nicole. Southern Plains, Julie. CER and the Staff Development Curriculum Committee, Nicole. So with that list, I would make a motion to approve this list for the coming 2018 year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Dan, photo con, school photo contract.
Yes, in Appendix D, you'll see a letter from Seifert Portrait Design, and our school photo contract with Seifert Portrait Design expired at the end of last year. Superintendent Brown worked with Mr. Seifert and high school staff to develop a new five-year contract for school years 2017-18 through 2021-2022. The copy is attached there on Appendix D. There are a couple of changes recommended, but those that were agreed upon are highlighted in yellow, including using the appropriate logos for sports teams, Fairmont and the ones that are co-op with other schools. And also, students who do not turn in an order envelope with payment enclosed will be charged an additional $3 late fee. Those are the two changes. So I would make a motion to approve the contracts as offered in Appendix D.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Dell, policy?
Policy, we are perpetually and forever updating and adding policies. We have revised policy 903. It's the visitors to the school district building, basically to include the post-secondary enrollment people to have access. We have a new policy 431, which is administering the service animals. New policy 534 is an unpaid meal charges, policy to go up to a $40 threshold. And policy 542 is an education of homeless and highly mobile students. So it kind of ensures that we will, to the best of our ability, teach all those in our community. So with those policies, and having gone over them, I would move that we approve the following policies and the new policies.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And back to you, Dan, Pilot Project.
Okay, find that in my...
Dan, if you make the motion, I'll explain it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll let you explain first, then we'll make the motion.
Okay. Well, the state, the Minnesota State Legislature last year passed a new law that encourages districts to form consortia, to come up with innovation zones. And the South Central Service Co-op, they put out a call, and there were a group of us that met, and Dan, or, excuse me, Andy Tredo was actually representing us on this board, and there are seven school districts that are part of this consortium. And Dave Pashke, our former curriculum director and former high school principal, has helped put this together. But if you look through this packet, JWP, Jamesville, Waldorf, Pemberton is one of the member districts, St. James Public Schools, Fairmont Area Schools, Wasika Public Schools, St. Peter Public Schools, Blueworth Area Public Schools, and there's a charter school that's involved. And the purpose of this is simply an application to have the Minnesota Department of Education name this group of schools that have joined together to come up and do an Innovation Research Zone Pilot Project. And this would take effect over the next five years. And the real goal of this, as you read through this 20-page proposal, it's to get individual school districts to work together collaboratively. And the main goal is to really implement the world's best workforce, to increase our graduation rate, to make more electives available to people. And, you know, in all honesty, one of the reasons why we were asked to be part of this is the, if you look on page 10, the whole area of doing, sharing the vocational programs, the CTE programs. And of course, we learned earlier tonight that we're obviously doing that because you're working very closely with Blueworth area, and in the past, we've had students from Martin Luther School come and take this program. And we certainly set up a, we're certainly a good example of a school district that, you know, and I remember Julie, years ago, you said, you know, we need to just do a great job ourselves and make our good classes available to anybody who wants to take them, and not be forcing ourselves on other schools, but simply offering our goodwill and our services. And that's really what the goal of this whole thing is about, is that we're going to work together as a collaborative team of, you know, St. Peter's a larger school, and St. James is a smaller school, but to work together to come up with ideas and get our faculty to work closely together. So that's kind of the goal of this, and this is simply an application to have MDE allow us to do this. And so, with that...
What kind of timeframe will there be for the response?
Well, we would expect in the next couple of months.
Okay.
Because we would want...
Before the end of the school year, then?
Oh, absolutely, because we'd want to do this, to implement this starting away. And then we're asking for this grant to go through July of 2023. So it's a five-year plan.
Have other districts received this designation?
No one has yet, because this is brand-new legislation. So we might become one of the first regional groups to do this in the state. To my knowledge, no other group has been approved yet.
Okay, exciting.
Yeah.
And in the paperwork here in Appendix A, you talked about the timeline for getting this done. I'll just, I'll just share a little bit of it. 2018-19 preliminary work and development of action plan. 2019 and 2020 initial implementation of action plan. 2020 and 2021 would be evaluation of the initial implementation, revisions and improvement. 2021 to '22 would be scaled implementation of innovation. And then in the fifth year, '22-'23 would be evaluation, revision, and full implementation of all the innovations. So I guess that's a lot like some of the other programs that we've got started here. I mean, you know, as far as the amount of time it takes to get them put together, but once they're, once they're rolling, I mean, they go really well. And I think all the superintendents that are on this list here, from my experience and what I've seen, these are all very active men and women who have been really on the edge of thinking of those new things. So I'm glad we're included in that group. And I would make a motion to carry, to approve the district application for the 2017 Innovation Research Zone Pilot Program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel. Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, medical leave, Dell?
We have four medical leaves tonight, and initially I would, I would move to approve the medical leave for Sue Nelson effective December 18th, 2017 through February 2nd, 2018 per medical recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Secondly, I would move that we approve the medical leave for Kirsten Russell, effective January 9th through 2018, through the end of the school year, per medical recommendations.
Or April 9th.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Effective April 9th, 2018, through the end of the school year.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would move to approve the medical leave for Jessica Schmidt, effective April 30th, 2018, through the end of the school year, per medical recommendations.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I would move that we approve the medical leave for Rochelle Franzen, effective January 15th, 2018, through the end of the 2018, 2019 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And the other side of personnel is employment. Julie?
Yes. So now that Rochelle Franzen has, will be going on this leave of absence, we're recommending, our recommendation has been made that Jasmine Claus-Glosson be hired to replace her. Jasmine is a recent graduate of the University of Northland, Iowa, where she earned her BA degree in elementary education. She completed her student teaching and kindergarten classrooms in Algonah and in a sixth-grade reading classroom in Estoril. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the employment of Jasmine Glosson as an elementary education teacher, effective January 15th, 2018, a salary of BA Step 1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Dell?
And we have a letter of retirement, and I would move that we approve the retirement of Ron Morris Custodian, effective February 28th, 2018.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we come to board committee reports, the first of which is policy committee, which dealt with the policies which we have just approved. And then we have staff welfare.
Yes, staff welfare met on Thursday, January 4th. We discussed the leave of absence for Rochelle Franzen. We decide, we discussed the hiring of her replacement. We also discussed the changeover from the Southern Plains Educational Co-op, the paraprofessionals, that'll be, that contract will be assumed by Fairmont area schools, and we did discuss some of that. We also discussed a contract from Gemini Studios that we have in place that we didn't, we just were made aware of it. We're not the group that makes those decisions. It's that would go to the operations committee. We also discussed and talked about a K-6 science teacher and a special assignment. The medical leave requests we discussed. Also, we looked at the possibility of elementary ELL teachers. I know there was an article in the paper, I think it was over the weekend, just kind of what the need is and how much more we are needing an instructor and that. And so we, part of our contract does cover people to receive extra education for that and to help with that need in our district. We also talked about changing some of the government classes around to make it so that they're, like the American govern, government class be more of a high, a senior high class versus a younger high school class and that. So, and there was a list here. So that was basically about it.
Okay. And Joe?
I actually, I didn't attend the SDCC meeting yesterday, but I did get a briefing on that by Jody. One of the things they talked about was the, they're doing, actually today they started a poll on whether or not to continue the current plan with a Q-Cop of having the two full-time observers versus going with an alternative plan of having 20 individual teachers serve as observers. And those poll numbers are coming in. They did see preliminary results, and it's running 80/20, 80% in favor of keeping the current plan, 20% in favor of going to a different plan. But they have a few more days to finish voting. So hopefully that will get resolved pretty soon, and then that will help us. We really need to know what direction the faculty want to go on that area so that we can start putting our staffing plans together. Because if that original plan, if the current plan is not approved, then we need to find a home for those two faculty members.
Right. But it, I mean, it's their plan. I mean, it's the teacher's plan, and so that's why it is in for them to, to make that decision. I mean, we are the ones who, you know, kind of help with the guidance and that with it. But it is their plan and how they want to use that program, so.
Yep. And it's really a, really a percolate type plan instead of a top-down plan. You're right, very good. That's it.
Okay. So I think we're done. Entertaining motion?
So move.
And a second for adjournment.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Now John can get to hockey.